Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call to order this work study for Independent School District 624. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Beloit.
Here.
Chapman.
Here.
Allison. Fahy here.
Here.
Newmaster.
Here.
Wilson.
Here.
All right, we will head into our first, our only operational item, the 10-year long-term facility maintenance plan. So you, Mr. Wald?
It is, yep. So a reminder, the long-term facilities maintenance revenue includes two different elements. One is health and safety, and the second part of that is deferred maintenance. In September, we brought in adjustment for the revenue plan to increase to $3 million. And the plan at that time was if the referendum failed, we had some deferred maintenance that we need to move on. And so now that the referendum has passed, we're recommending, excuse me, backing that down, the deferred maintenance element of it out, and so that will leave us with $700,000 in LTFM funds, which supports our health and safety plan. So there'll be no deferred maintenance revenue in the plan.
Okay. So we need to move on this action.
Yeah.
May I, everyone, share something?
So obviously, normally, we don't take action at a work-study meeting. We're allowed to, we can do that. This is one of those rare instances where we should do it now rather than wait till December just because the Department of Education is waiting on the new debt plan. So that's, it's being worked on, and this is part of that. So this is an unusual circumstance, but it may happen from time to time.
And one more thing that might be interesting to the board and anyone listening is the property tax statements that went out to property owners recently included that higher amount. That's the projected property tax. Now that we're backing that down, that will cause the other local levies element of that property tax to go down. And so people will see a downward adjustment, most likely, on the property tax. Because of the 2.3 million we're backing out of the levy.
Okay. So we've got a recommended action to move and prove the adjustment of the LTFM levy down to 700,000. Is there a motion to do so?
No.
A motion by Mr. Wilson, a second by Mr. Chapman. Any discussion? I have a couple of questions. Do you know if the county will then send out a corrected tax statement? Is that typically the process?
Yeah, they will send out the actual statement, and they'll have the opportunity where people can pay their taxes. They will have the updated amounts on it.
Okay. And then, so the 2.3 that we're moving it back, I know originally that we had planned it. All that stuff will just kind of move into the bond as we move that through?
Yep.
Okay. Any other questions regarding the action? Seeing or hearing none, this will require a roll-call vote.
Beloit.
Aye.
Chapman.
Aye.
Fahy.
Aye.
Moeen.
Aye.
Newmaster.
Aye.
Wilson.
Aye.
Okay. Motion passes.
Thank you.
We will now move into our discussion item, the revision on the strategic plan. And I apologize, is that?
It's all right. I can kick off.
Dr. Kepchak?
Yeah. Just welcome Dr. Gillespie to take us through this agenda item. He did some work here this past summer and through the fall, and she's going to update us on that work.
Perfect.
To our strategic plan.
Thank you. I have two colleagues with me, Christina Pierre, Principal at Sunrise Park, and then Jill Testman, Supervisor in Special Education. Did I get it right? Okay. They were, as I go through, they helped do some of the revisions that we did in terms of leadership. So I wanted them here in case you have some questions and to thank them for their leadership as we looked at revising the strategic plan. So really, we reconvened our district strategic plan planning committee. If you remember, I updated you at the end of August for two days in August to really look at our strategic plan and make sure that, one, get an update on the work that's been done over the past year, and, two, make sure that we still believed that we needed the strategies that we have and/or wanted some updates to those action plans and add or add additional strategies. And so really, the purpose was to make sure that they understood that their work has, honoring their work that they did in the planning, but also celebrating a lot of progress that we made over the year, and then taking us through a process to make sure that we believed that the current strategic plan is still what we need to move us forward to realizing our mission. The outcomes were, are, that we're presenting today, a revised mission statement. The committee decided that Strategies Four and Eight needed to go back to Action Committee, that they needed some more work, given our current context and/or difficulties that we had moving them forward as a district. And then finally, we added a Strategy Nine to support our work moving forward around the high school. Our final meeting was November 1st, where the work that we did with two action teams, we came and presented to the district planning team. They had an opportunity to ask questions, and then they decided to accept the work that we did and move it to you, so that I can update you and ultimately ask that you approve this new plan. So if you remember this graphic, this is what's been guiding us for the past two years. It has our, and really what we took the committee through. We went through each aspect of the strategic plan, which I'm going to do with you as well, so that you know they reconfirmed their beliefs and the process that we went through. We went through each belief statement and asked the district strategic planning committee if they believe these are, that we could reconfirm our belief, and we did for all of them. I'm going to read them. Well, I really can't see them. I should have worn my glasses. I'm going to read them, sorry for my weird angle. "We believe that each person has innate value. Service nurtures both community and self. Everyone has the power to design their own future. Respect for diversity is strength. Integrity is fundamental to relationships. Each person has unrealized potential. Communities with shared goals have unlimited potential. We are stewards of the earth. Learning enriches one's quality of life. Everyone has a right to a safe and respectful environment. Challenge leads to innovation and growth, and all people deserve unconditional love." We had conversation, and the committee reconfirmed that these are our beliefs and that we, they still guide our work as we continue to grow as a district. We then went through the process of looking at our mission statement. What I have in front of you is the mission statement that's been guiding us for the past year and a half and really talked at length about whether or not we believe this is sufficient in terms of where we want to go. And the committee arised at two tweaks to our current mission statement. So if you look, I'm going to read the whole thing one more time, and then I'll emphasize the work. Thank you. "The mission of White Bear Lake Area School District, the community at the forefront of educational excellence. Honoring our legacy and courageously building the future is to ensure each student realizes their unique talents and abilities and makes meaningful contributions with local and global impact through a vital system distinguished by students who design and create their own future, a culture that respects diverse people and ideas, safe nurturing and inspiring experiences, exceptional staff and families committed to student success, and abundant and engaged community partners." So really, the conversation around the second bullet was how do we make what we had before, diversity of people and ideas, even stronger in terms of what the committee was trying to communicate in terms of what type of culture that we are building in our district? And so we landed on a culture that respects diverse people and ideas. And then the committee wanted to expand on environments and move it to experiences, knowing that experiences also encompasses environments, but that it's broader than simply maybe what people might think of as facilities. I'm going to stop. Are there any questions about the revised mission statement or what the committee came up with?
Questions, comments, concerns? All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Then we went through the objectives, and again, I'll read them again. "100% of students feel valued. 100% of students accomplish their personalized learning plan. 100% of students are prepared for and implement," excuse me, "are prepared for and implement their design for their future. 100% of students graduate, and 100% of students creatively adapt to an ever-changing world. Each student meaningfully contributes to community." That is, they reconfirmed their belief in those objectives as well, and we really had a lot of conversation on how they align to the mission statement and then ultimately the strategies. So finally, when we went through the strategies, we reconfirmed that we wanted to continue with all eight strategies with one modification to Strategy Number Eight. "We will ensure social and emotional growth of each student." It used to say "our" students. The committee, after updates from me, after I interviewed many people, decided they wanted Strategy Four. "We will build organizational capacity." And Strategy Eight, "We will ensure social and emotional growth of each student." To go back to committees, and so we did just that. So we convened a committee of six building representatives and six district representatives to examine Strategy Four. "We will build organizational capacity." And we talked about the positives that we've had in trying to operationalize the strategy, then also some of the challenges that emerged. Ultimately, what came from the work is that we kept all six action plans. However, we added additional action steps to that to help us move forward in terms of how we support instructional leadership and also how we, yes, that is it. How we communicate. My head's going too fast. So how we communicate as a district and how we support instructional leadership. Am I missing anything? No. Do you have questions on Strategy Four?
Questions, comments, concerns?
All right.
Thank you.
Then Strategy Eight, we convened a team on October 29th, and we examined the whole strategy through the definition of the whole child, which we did some work with that group on what that means and looked at the strategy through healthy, safe, engaged, supported, and challenged. And ultimately, what came from that work is we reconfirmed the same action plans, all seven, and then we added an additional eighth action plan, which talks about district focus on staff well-being and development. So really, how do we support our staff in the same ways that we're looking to support our students and so that they're able to support our students in what we're looking for in terms of outcomes? There was lots of great conversation. Many of the action steps along the way for the action plans were tweaked a little bit or enhanced based on the definition of the whole child. Any questions for me on that strategy?
Question, Ms. Beloit.
Do we have a specific SEL curriculum that we're using for the teachers and staff currently?
The elementary school does, and we're examining for secondary in terms of middle school and high school.
So we don't have one currently for middle and high school?
Yeah, yeah. In middle school, we do. Yeah. We use it through our advisory program.
Say that again, I'm sorry.
We do have a curriculum that we use in our advisory program that focuses on SEL.
But was it developed by us, or are we using some type of research-based program?
Yeah, it's an outside program. It wasn't developed by us.
Okay.
Any other questions?
All right.
Finally, the committee added an additional strategy, Strategy Number Nine. "We will imagine new concepts in learning and teaching at White Bear Lake Area High School." We, I convened a group of stakeholders August 22nd and September 12th. They really worked together to also help us as we informed in terms of the information campaign that we did for the bond referendum, and they developed critical attributes of learning and teaching along with physical attributes. And this work that they did will be wrapped into the process that we do with WOLD in terms of moving forward with the future of learning and how that supports our work as we now get to look at our 9-12 high school campus. Any questions about the strategy?
Questions, comments, concerns? Dr. Newmaster?
I'm just impressed. I mean, it's really tweaked, and you've got it all put together. And I know from having been on committees, one word change might take an afternoon to get it just right. So it reads really well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
So we've updated our graphic now. The last slide is with our new mission statement and our additional strategy, and then the wording for the Strategy Number Eight. And then the final slides, I wanted to make sure that we honored all the different action team and planning team members that participated. I think it's one of our greatest strengths on how many people we've had involved in the process, and that was no different this time. So each team has a slide with their names on it.
All right. Comments, questions, concerns? Thank you all very much for your work. I know it's a big thing, and we really appreciate your work, so thank you.
Thanks.
All right. Move to our next discussion item, number two, which is the middle school schedule change proposals. Ms. Paul.
Hand it out to Ms. Pierre. She'll get us started.
All right. Ms. Pierre.
Great. Good evening, everyone. I'll just start by saying Catherine and I, before coming to middle school, we both had a lot of years of experience in high school. And one thing that we know for sure is that students don't walk into high school as blank slates. All the learning that happens in middle school is absolutely critical to the success that those students have in high school. And so this is our intent. Our intent in this proposal is really to ensure that our middle school students leave rigorously prepared for high school. And we know that if we leverage literacy, that that is likely to impact their success across all areas. And so that's our intent, is to increase literacy in middle school. And then, at the same time, honor and maintain the wide range of experiences that our middle school students have now. We would like to continue to provide that in the future. So I have two things to click now. Let's go. Okay. So how was this proposal developed? We took into account a lot of information, starting with the strategic plan, both for the district and for our middle schools. We examined MCA data for White Bear Lake as well as 13 comparison districts, and those comparison districts were chosen based on location, so if they were near us, and also demographics, so if they looked like us but maybe weren't necessarily right next door. We analyzed the course requirements also, so we didn't just look at MCA scores. We also looked at what are those other districts doing compared to what we're doing, conversations with PTO and parent groups, and conversations, meetings with staff members also. And luckily, we just had a review of the strategic plan, so I don't need to read all of these, but you can see that when we're talking about preparing middle school students, making sure they're ready for high school, that that definitely aligns to what we're trying to accomplish in the strategic plan. And in fact, it aligns to many of the action steps that are also present in the strategic plan. Notice that first one talks about making sure students are prepared for agency, and that two primary pieces of that preparation are reading and writing skills. Also, the importance of the schedule, having a schedule that supports students being able to learn everything that they need to learn and also being able to get help when they need help. So that's our goal also in the schedule, is to create a lot of flexibility for our students. There was also feedback from the World's Best Workforce Committee taken into account. There were conversations at that committee about the need for more literacy, the need for students to be able to access more text materials and to build more time for intervention in the schedule for students.
So with that, we really took a look to say, how do we create a comprehensive approach to literacy? So that we're really thinking across grades six through eight in the language arts instruction for all of our students. It was important that we have additional support for students who read below grade level while also pushing students who are reading at or above grade level. So looking, this new schedule gives opportunity for things like possibly team-taught classes, smaller group instruction, some direct instruction for individuals and small groups. And then the reading comprehension strategies would be integrated across the curriculum. So really working to continue to develop that core with all of our teachers so that students are learning how to annotate the text, mark the text, identify key words, phrases, determine author's purpose, and things like that.
This one controls that. I'll do this in case you need to do it.
Thank you. With that, what we really wanted to do was prioritize literacy on that teaching and learning. This is all grounded in research. So really looking at the gradual release model, where the teacher provides some demonstration. We provide opportunity for students to have that supportive practice within the class. And then there's opportunity for student choice, so it can really be tailored to their needs and to meet their needs with some ongoing assessment. What's nice about this with that student choice is that the instruction also empowers the students. So that goes back to that piece in our strategic plan on agency. Allows them to set ambitious goals, engage in self-assessment and reflection, and then that next step of really being able to apply and transfer what they've been learning to new and unique situations. So with middle school, we talk a lot in middle school about how some students are still really learning to read at a greater level. All students are reading to learn, and that we have to keep pushing both of those skills all the way across, so that when students leave middle school, they have a really strong foundation of literacy. In this proposal, we'd really be looking at different units of study so that students would be examining things at a deeper level. For example, a deep study of character, which could be supported with mini lessons. So you go in, they're grounded in what the standards are. Everybody as a group gets this real targeted support and instruction. And then from there, there's some individual group and some small group work that allows the teacher to be able to confer with different students so that they're having that academic discourse, being able to assess their learning, and you're being able to differentiate and push that learning forward. It will provide a lot of opportunity for students to be able to read and write within the classroom and have some guided practice. So the other piece of this is we went in, as Christina mentioned, and we really looked at, how do we compare to other districts that are similar? The one thing that we found is that we are the only known district to provide a half a year of Minnesota history at grade six. So we're really looking at putting in one full year of Minnesota history at grade six, which again is rooted in that literacy piece, building their background knowledge and experience, adding additional literacy courses. Eight of 12 comparison districts had additional literacy beyond just basic language arts for their students in grades six and seven. The rationale behind this, reading and writing are foundational skills for learning for all content area courses and applied in all subject areas. Students who read or write at grade level are better prepared for that rigorous coursework, so we're concerned about how do we continue to open paths for students. We're also concerned about them having those deep skills to be able to participate. The grade-level reading and writing skills are essential for not only closing the achievement gap, but closing that opportunity gap for students as well. And then reading and writing are really underlying components for 21st century skills when we start talking about collaboration, critical thinking, technology literacy, to have that strong foundation. Beyond that, we took a look at all of the research. What was really affirming to me is that there is research that was present 20 years ago that supported this. There is research that just came out this year that continues to support the notion of literacy and the importance of having a strong foundation in literacy. So really having that extended time, and a lot of the research talked about having an extended block where you would maybe have 90 to 100 minutes for language arts within that schedule so that you're able to really dive deeply into things, provide that direct and explicit instruction, while also integrating lessons so that students can practice and transfer that application of skill. In addition, it's opportunities for the extended discussion of text. And so providing that opportunity for kids to be able to talk with each other about what they're reading, why they know what they know, and having that facilitated with an adult.
And I'm going to speak to the rationale for why we have a full year of Minnesota history. As somebody who's taught sixth-grade social studies and did it at a district where we had a full year of sixth-grade social studies, it was really important for me to not only utilize the textbook, but then also be able to pull a lot of primary source documents. In talking with our sixth-grade teachers currently who are doing this on a half-year basis, they just don't have the opportunity to do that. And as there's, I mean, everybody here is in education. We know how important it is to go deep instead of to go wide, right? And many days, we're going wide. And so to be able to take the literacy skills that this half-year extra would be able to apply into our social studies curriculum would be really important for our students. Currently, they're learning up to about the year 1900 or so. And then there's this gap between what they learn in sixth grade and then applying that into seventh grade for U.S. history. Right, we're more focused on Minnesota history, but there's a lot of ties there. And then there's gaps that our seventh-grade teachers have to make up. So having that time to just be able to slow down a little bit and really think and analyze and write and read at a much more deep level, I think will serve our students well. In order to do this, though, we do have some needs, and that's increasing that reading and writing proficiency. And more importantly, I feel, and Bob could speak to this, the two that build this master schedule, it's very complex. There's not a lot of flexibility, and there's a lot of transitions for kids. And so we want to allow kids to have all of those great experiences that middle school allows you to have, to, you know, have the ability to do design and modeling and art and all the wonderful things that we are able to do, and show them that we can do this in a way that cuts down on the amount of transitions that they have to do, especially at sixth grade when we're asking them to do a lot of transitioning from one class to another, from one semester to another. Now it's quarter two, so now you don't go to art, right? There's just a lot that we're putting on a sixth grader's plate.
Yeah. And I'd add to that, it feels like to me, as a master scheduler in the building for years and years, lately, it feels like we're over-promising and under-delivering because we have this amazing selection of electives that kids can choose. And always in July, I'm making numerous phone calls to parents and students. Sorry, you weren't able to get your first or even second choice sometimes. And we're doing a lot of manipulating of the schedule and hand scheduling and whatnot to try and make it work, but despite all that work, the numbers and the mathematical probability of being able to take the classes and us to offer the classes without having classes of six kids in a class or something like that, it just doesn't work out. And so it feels like we're over-promising, under-delivering, and we're having to give that. When you think about student agency, you know, it's tough to make that call and break that kid's heart because they really wanted these two elective classes, and we put them out there and made it sound like that they were going to get them, but the reality of it is a lot of times, we're not able to make that happen because, you know, we can't have classes of 10 kids, you know? We need classes closer to 30, or whatever the average is.
Right. So what does that look like? Right? So our proposed changes for literacy in, when we're talking about Minnesota history, is that a student that comes into sixth grade would take Minnesota history every day for the full year. And that's in line with what a lot of our districts that we're comparing ourselves to are doing. Kids currently who are in sixth grade take four quarter classes. They would now not do that. They, we would spread those out throughout the schedule, throughout their middle school experience. And so you see language arts and math and science and fire and music, fire and music pairing together every other day, right? The literacy piece, then, would be spread out. That semester of literacy would be spread out for the year, and it would pair with a half a year of design and modeling and a half a year of art. And so there's still going to be this every-other-day flexibility. There's still going to be this opportunity for kids to experience art and design and modeling. But in seventh grade, if you take a look over on the right side, is when they're currently taking health in sixth grade for a quarter. Now they would be taking health that would pair with that literacy class every other day.
Yeah. And later on in the presentation, we'll go through each grade. We'll go through the specifics of each grade. Right now, we're just going through the pieces of the specific course changes. So on this slide, we're talking about adding the literacy and extending Minnesota history to a full year. All right. So how are we going to account for that? Because we just added quite a bit in. And so one thing that we're proposing is that we shift the way we deliver world language. And so right now, we have a half a year's worth of world language in each of sixth, seventh, and eighth grade, and we're proposing that we go to just one full year in eighth grade. And the rationale for that is, the way we have it now, students achieve Level One. So basically, they leave middle school with the equivalent of Spanish One, and we would maintain that. We would just put it all into one year. It would allow students to just learn that language continuously instead of the way they do it now, which is learn it for a semester, then have a half-year or maybe a full year off, depending on how it gets scheduled the following year, and so on. So this way, they could take a continuous course all throughout eighth grade. It would also allow them to earn a high school credit. So because of the way it's all arranged now with three half-years, we're not able to award- So because of the way it's all arranged now with three half-years, we're not able to award high school credit. But if we put it all in eighth grade, one solid year, then we can recognize that as a high school credit, which will help with flexibility for students going into high school as well. And then, it also allows for the option to not take a language. Right now, that's not an option in middle school. Students, almost all students have a language, and that's just not always appropriate. It doesn't always work well for all students. And so, for students to have the option to not start a language in eighth grade would be helpful for many students.
Can we just hold on one second?
Sure, absolutely, we can pause.
I just want to make sure if there's no questions or I want to, because I saw some hands going up, I just want to make sure. Maddie?
I have one question. So, is there a worry that, you know, kids that start a language, say, in elementary school? Because I know some of that elementary schools teach languages, and I know that, like, at my elementary school, it wasn't White Bear, but we did take what White Bear provided for the one credit over the three years, we took that in elementary school. Is there a worry that, like, kids are going to lose that ground because they're not taking a language for another two years before they're, once again, going back to taking a world language?
Yeah, I think that worry is out there, and again, all our students we're finishing middle school with was the equivalent of Spanish 1, and so, I'm not sure what they were bringing in from elementary. I know that they're having quite a bit of exposure in elementary, and I know that our world language teachers have been talking about the idea of having some language clubs. So if students want to stay connected or they want to learn something about a language, that they can do it in a different way.
Dr. Remaster?
As somebody who has taught German over the years, in and out, and watched what's the different iterations we've had and how we teach it, I know if I remember, at one point in middle school, I think when my kids were there, they didn't, they had it in seventh and eighth grade, or something like that. And I'm not sure how it added up to when you went to high school. When they went to the sixth, seventh, and eighth, it seems to me that kids could sample a different language every year if they wanted to. They didn't necessarily take the same language three years in a row. You know, if they had Chinese or Spanish in elementary school, maybe they took French or German, and the next year, they tried something else. So, just, I'm just curious, what percentage of kids actually followed one language all the way through, and how many sampled?
Well, I don't know, but lots, almost, I'd have to guess 90-some percent would continue with that same language. And we were always really upfront about that, that any student who starts in sixth grade, whatever language you pick, it's our intention that they would continue in that language through the three years. And that was another piece, the reason, one of the big reasons why we had to do that is just because of the number of course offerings that were always opposite the world language classes. And you can imagine that when you get into the eighth grade and you have, we did have four different world languages, and then the possibility of three different levels in those four different world languages, you know, you start ending up with 12 different options of world language opposite certain classes, and it gets really challenging.
I know that as a language teacher, just the mix of the levels the kids come in with, it varies so much from what they had and what they skipped. And I'm wondering, because I haven't heard any data about it, all kids have, most kids have Spanish, couple of schools have Chinese, if I understand that still. How many of those kids, when they went to middle school, continued that, or did they decide to try something else?
I do know that there's not a strong correlation with the students that were in Chinese that stayed in Chinese and they did try another language.
Yeah, well, those are all those different factors, because when you start teaching that first or second level in high school, if you've got kids scattered all over the place, it really makes it an interesting start to the year.
As it stands right now, you're asking fifth graders and fifth grade parents to make a really important decision, but they don't really have all the information about what it means to pick a language. Because as soon as they make that decision, they're locked in. And that's where it is for a fifth grader who says, "I really want to try German," and then midway through says, "Ooh, man, why'd I pick that?" Right? But now, there's no place for him or her to go. They just stick in German because that's the way the schedule has to run.
And my other question, and this looks at transitions and moving on from a world language point of view, if it's moved back to, you know, the full year in eighth grade and they've got that preparation, so those kids are marching on to high school, and then some kids will decide to take art or something else instead, choice is great, we just had the problem more recently, there was not enough first levels. We had kids coming in from Matamidi to try and catch a first level. So, I mean, it's complicated. I can see putting everybody in eighth grade that chooses a language for a full year prepares them better across the board to move on to another level than scattered. But I just would hope that there's also the ability for kids in, once there's one high school, it will be nice, because I just hope there will be always a first level in languages so they can change their mind. Or take two. Thanks.
Other questions?
Just to tag on that, I just see a real benefit that the students in eighth grade can get a high school credit. And with the literacy work, you know, we've heard reports about encouraging students to take the AP classes, the honors classes, and then providing supports during the summer for them to bring them up to the literacy skills they need. So, why not focus in middle school on helping the kids with those literacy skills?
Hold on a second. Ms. Allison in the Maugatian.
And I wanted to just say that I'm excited about the possibility of a full year of Minnesota history. The standards call for a full year, and it's, the way that the standards are structured, it also includes geography, civics, and economics, and so students would then have the potential to get all four disciplines throughout a whole year of Minnesota studies. And I think that it's important, too, if the class can't get past 1900, if we're looking at being equitable and thinking about who our students are, our students need to see themselves in our history and our social studies. And so, it's important that we're covering content that reflects our Latino, our Hmong, our Somali students, which are all included in that history. So, and the other great thing about social studies as a full year is that in disciplinary literacy, you're doing the work of literacy. And history is all about reading and writing. So I think this is a really good opportunity.
Mr. Wilson?
Well, moving from the sublime to the mundane, back on the annotation of textbooks, and that's a grand strategy, I wholeheartedly support that, but what becomes of those textbooks? Is it part of the end of the year or end of term process to remove all the annotations? Or is it in the middle school budget to replace them yearly?
No, they don't mark the text.
Not the textbook.
Yeah. If they're going to actually go in the text, it would be a post-it, like they would throw a post-it and they're right on it.
All right.
No, we're not throwing notebooks.
All right, any other questions? Thank you very much for allowing us that.
Okay, yeah, absolutely. Okay, so other shifts, then, with design and modeling currently, we have a quarter in sixth grade, a quarter in seventh grade, and then students have access to electives in eighth grade. We would shift to just having a quarter in sixth grade and electives in eighth grade. We would remove the seventh grade quarter of design and modeling. And then, family and consumer science, right now, we have a quarter in sixth grade and a choice in eighth grade. We would go to just having the choice available in eighth grade. And health is just combining the two quarters. Right now, we have a quarter in sixth grade and a quarter in seventh grade. We would put them together and have essentially a semester, but we would run it every other day all year in seventh grade. Our health teachers are really excited about this. They're excited about the idea of being able to collaborate with the literacy teacher because they would be partners in it every other day. They're also excited about the idea of having students across a full year because, you know, the health curriculum has a lot of sensitive topics in it, and it's really hard to deliver when you're only seeing the kids for a quarter in sixth grade and a quarter in seventh grade. Having them across the entire year and doing it all in seventh grade is more appropriate, especially because those seventh graders are just a little bit more mature and they're a little bit more ready for some of those heavy health topics.
Well, and I'll speak just one thing also to that. Think about how many times the news, when some health crisis comes up, right? If you're not taking health at that time, you're not talking about it with your health teacher. And so, this would allow for a seventh grade student, in this case, to be able to have that touchstone, that connection with their health teacher, and be able to talk about things like vaping, right? That is now very prevalent in the news and a very real-world issue for our students across the district. So, it really is an opportunity for them to make their connections with their health teacher, and it's developmentally appropriate for them to take that in a full year. Ms. Fahey?
And can I add, too? Having taught science, we tried an interdisciplinary unit with health, and that one quarter made it really difficult, where you can look at how the, particularly the seventh grade science curriculum aligns with what they're doing in health and work on interdisciplinary units, which this would make that much, much easier to do.
So this slide just is our attempt at making what is current concrete and what we're proposing concrete. So that top line shows that currently, sixth graders have a half a year of Minnesota history and a half a year of world language. That'd be just replaced by a full year of Minnesota history. Language arts, math, and science, there is no change for a sixth grader. FIAID and music, there is no change for a sixth grader. And then, it just decreases the number of electives that they have and replaces that half a year of literacy. So overall, it actually also decreases the number of courses that a sixth grader has during the year to make that transition a little bit easier for them as well. It doesn't eliminate the courses from their experience, it moves those courses to a different place in their middle school experience.
Ms. Boye?
So how much does this really open up the schedule for sixth graders? I know, just trying to get your own kid to have a schedule that makes any sense whatsoever and moving stuff around, how much does this actually open it up and, so that you don't have 6,000 changes to make for the kids over the summer before you?
To start, it decreases it by two courses. So that adds that flexibility. Just by virtue of going from three all-year courses to four all-year courses allows us flexibility, because now I'm not having to try to mix and match. If I want to move somebody's language arts class, I might have to attend to, well, have they had Minnesota history, or have they had a world language? So it gives us that flexibility there, as well as having that half a year of literacy throughout the entire year creates more courses that they have all year long.
Well, I have to say, just personally, I remember talking with Mr. Schockenmeyer three years ago about the schedule and frustrations with the schedule, and when he walked me through all of the different things, I thought it was nuts. And I think it's...
We should see Bob in the summer.
And when you have, any kid going between going from fifth grade where you're basically with one teacher all day long, and then you move to sixth grade, and you have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, twelve different classes that you're going to take throughout that year, they're already overwhelmed in sixth grade with all the changes, and then we throw that at them. Both of my kids, sixth grade was a difficult transition. They're very different from each other, but sixth grade was really difficult. I think one of the reasons why was because of all those different transitions that they had to make all the time. So I am very happy to see the schedule change.
And currently, we throw the most transitions at sixth graders.
At the worst time.
Parents that have never navigated middle school, like, hey, pick a language, make sure you pick right.
Well, and even as a parent, trying to figure out when, which class they're in, to tell your kid, okay, well, you have this today. Oh, no, 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 that was last quarter. Oh, okay, well, moving on.
Yeah, you can't even go to conferences. Yeah, right?
And it's a challenging schedule for some of our teachers, too, because we have teachers that teach multiple grade levels and sometimes even traveling, you know, between the middle schools or middle school and the high schools. And so, you know, just when you're thinking about who you want teaching your child, you want a teacher that's, you know, focused, ready, refreshed, ready to go with your kid. And if we have teachers that are bouncing between multiple levels, grade levels, and buildings, it's a tough assignment for them.
Seventh grade is a minor change. If you notice on the bottom, currently this year, they would take a quarter of health, a quarter of design and modeling, and then a half a year of world history, or world history, world language, and that gets replaced simply by that half a year of literacy and then that half of your health all year long. And I would echo what Christina was saying in regards to the health teachers being excited about working with the literacy teachers, as well as being excited that, wow, kids are going to have health and FIAID all year for a whole year, and so we can really talk about how those two pieces work together, and that that's really important as well. So this simplifies it again for seventh graders who, when you're 12, transitions are still tough. And then, eighth grade is where, now at the bottom, the students will have that choice to have that world language for the full year, or they have an opportunity to choose from two electives. And so, it gives them a little bit more agency in what are they interested in moving into their last year of middle school.
Questions? Dr. Remaster?
I just have a question from the viewpoint of a mom whose kids were both heavy into music and now do it professionally. So, I remember the zero-hour jazz and choir and band during the day as electives. So I'm concerned if there's no music.
Music is in the fine arts. So where it says fine arts, it's that choice of band, orchestra, choir, or art.
And my brain is forgetting, where was music in seventh and sixth grade?
It's always paired with FIAID.
It's in every grade.
It is.
And then, you're going to have to still sort of orchestra, band, or a blend of all of the above?
Well, the students choose. They choose between band, orchestra, choir, or art in seventh and eighth grade.
Okay.
And in sixth grade, they only have the three music choices because they have the quarter of art.
History and literacy, I can't, music right away, I shouldn't. But, no, it looks good. And middle school has always been the most complex scheduling any administrator ever had to do or kid had to navigate. So, this just might be better.
Other questions, comments, concerns? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
So this will come before the board at the next meeting. Dr. Kaczmarek?
I'll talk about the process. Secondary course proposals will be wrapped into that presentation.
Yes, both these middle school proposals and high school proposals. We'll talk about the high school course proposal changes next, and then we will bring them for you to approve at the next board meeting.
Okay.
So then, these would take effect next year, then?
Yes.
Next school year?
Yeah.
Yes. No.
I just want to make sure. Unless the board directs us.
Yes, yes.
Good.
Sorry. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Move on to the review of the secondary course proposals. Ms. Paul, is this still you?
Somewhat. I'm going to hand it right over to Jen Babish. This is Jen Babish. She is our Secondary Teaching and Learning Coordinator, and each year, Jen leads our work on working directly with principals, different departments, to review course proposals, vet them through our World's Best Workforce Committee, and ultimately brings them here for you to get a first look at them. And then, again, these will, again, you will visit those at the next school board meeting in order to, for us to seek approval on them moving forward. So here's Jen Babish.
Thanks, Ms. Paul. Thank you for having me here tonight to go over the secondary course proposals. And I am just going to focus in on the high school course proposals. And like Ms. Paul said, we really anchor the work that we do with course proposals and our World's Best Workforce, and really focusing on that goal of students college and career-ready by graduation. And so, this was also brought to the World's Best Workforce for feedback before we brought it to the work-study tonight. for feedback before we brought it to the work study tonight. We also look at our standards, and we get industry feedback on what is most current. We do student surveys to get their input on what students are feeling like the need and the wants are for new courses. And also, we use our strategic plan as our guide as we're looking at course proposals. So I have three new course proposals for you tonight. The first is Advanced Placement Computer Science A. And you can see the description there that would go into the course guide for the high school. This course would be the fourth course in our information technology career pathways. The focus is on learning computer science through programming. The skill of being able to program is in high demand of the current and future workforce. A student survey indicated that there was a high interest in learning JavaScript. So that would be the programming specific for this course. And students also want to continue to have opportunities to take rigorous courses of study and to obtain college credit by passing the AP exam. I'll just pause if there's any...
Any questions, comments? Okay, thank you.
The next new course proposal is Personalized Learning and Navigating Plan. And this course allows students to learn both social and emotional skills in tandem with their academic skills. At the high school, we already offer courses in study skills, communication, transition life skills, fine and gross motor skills, and academic strategies. And this course would enhance the course offerings that already exist for students who have IEPs.
Questions, comments?
You do have a letter transposition on the third line.
Thank you. You can go over that for next time.
Should be A and D.
Thank you.
Ms. Boy, did you have a question?
Who would be teaching this class? Would it be one of the special education teachers or?
Correct.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. And then finally, a new course that we're proposing, Introduction to Business. And this introductory course in business education would enhance our students' opportunity to explore the business career field and also align with the new student organization that we're proposing at the high school called DECA. DECA's mission is to prepare emerging leaders and entrepreneurs for careers in marketing, finance, hospitality, and management. And this course also aligns with an Introduction to Business course at Century College. So we are working with Century College, and we would work with them to offer this course as a concurrent enrollment course. So students would be able to earn college credit for taking this course.
Questions, comments? Ms. Boy?
We've never done DECA here?
No.
Really?
Yeah.
I remember doing that in high school.
Yeah.
Just last year.
Exactly. Right, so...
Thank you.
Okay, great. So the next piece of changes are just course name changes, and some of them are very simple for obvious reasons, and some of them are more, a little bit more involved. So the name American History implies the standards for not only United States history, but also for Central and South American history will be met through this course. However, this course that we offer only meets state and national standards for youth United States history. So the standards for Central and South American history are met at the 11th grade level in the world history course at South Campus. Thus, the change. The second one, the North Campus, is proposing name changes for their choir offerings to align more with the nautical theme of the rest of their choirs, and also so that the men's choir doesn't necessarily have to reflect a gender-specific group. So that's for those two changes there.
But it is a men's choir, right?
Yes. I mean, yes, or students who identify as male, I would say. Okay, our next one. We currently have juniors and seniors sign up for Algebra III. And so the thing is, we also offer a college and the high school course, Math 70. That's a developmental course that follows the curriculum of Century College. And really, this course prepares seniors to take credit-bearing math courses once they go to college. And so we have both juniors and seniors who sign up for the Algebra III, Trig, and Analytical Geometry. So we just want to be able to duplicate those course offerings, and then one is specific to the juniors, and then the senior course is that developmental course that's aligned to Century College. The next course, Web Page Design to Biznology, flashy title. We currently have, this course provides opportunities for students to learn and experience the integration of business and technology. And students would be exposed to a number of professional technology platforms and interfaces in order to prepare them for high school and post-secondary careers. So we believe this one offers a little bit more variety and not just specific to web page.
Mr. Chapman?
Is that a term that is common now? I've not heard it, or is it a white bear creation?
Yeah, I think it might be a white bear creation.
With all the different things, changes occurring, I wasn't sure if that was something that had come into play. So, okay, thank you.
Yep. And then the more obvious ones, Modern Literature, Film Studies to just Film Studies. And then Publications would be Yearbook. And then finally, we have AP Geography, a proposed name change to Honors Geography. So under our current system...
I've just got a question on that one.
Yeah.
From seeing human geography or AP Geography at North Campus.
Yeah.
And when I heard that Minnesota history was going to be all year, I thought, aha, maybe geography will be all year, because everybody else teaches it as a full-year course, not a semester course. So are we eliminating the fact that this is a college course now by calling it honors?
So, so we're definitely wrestling with that, that we are the only high school in the metro area that offers it as a semester. And so we felt that a way that we could still offer this course of rigor for our students, but not put the pressure of an AP exam and an AP course. And first semester is only 86 days, and students who take it second semester only have 62 days. And so what we wanted to do is allow to take away that barrier of AP, offer the same curriculum that we're currently using by the college board, and then students would be able to have that level of rigor in that course, but not the pressure of that AP exam when there really isn't a full year to be able to do that in our current schedule.
Hold on a second, Dr. Neimester. Do you have a follow-up?
Yeah, I do. The kids that did it, for the Media Center, I remember buying the book that was the study guide for AP, because there weren't enough books for the kids to have it, if they'd had it for a semester, the rest of the year, so they could study. But they still had a pretty successful rate in passing it. So I know kids that said, you know, Frau, you know, or Doc, or whatever. I passed. I did it.
Yep.
And if they don't have the pressure to do it, some kids, they don't have to take the test. But this way, they have the option, and a lot of colleges give you credit for it.
Absolutely.
So if a large percentage of kids successfully survive the gauntlet, then they still do the AP test.
Yep. So we do have, our current passing rate from 2019 was 36 and a half percent, which is roughly 20% lower than the state average.
But the rest of the state has a full year.
Exactly.
So I think it's pretty darn good.
Yeah.
Hold on a second, Ms. Chapman?
How many students take the test on average in that class?
Yeah, I believe most, most students.
The majority are taking the AP class. And for the teachers in the department, it doesn't feel right to be having kids take an AP class that's only offered in a semester because they're not getting through, they're not getting through the content. And so to call it college prep and being honors is still that opportunity to access rigor, but in a way that is true to the course that they're actually taking. Because they're not teaching the full AP course right now, and they're really conflicted by the number of students taking that as their very first AP class. If you're a student in the, in the group of kids that are taking that and you're not passing, it does impact your decision-making on how confident you are when you're moving into the rest of our AP courses that are aligned with the length of time that they are recommended to be offered.
But they do, if I heard you right, they will have the option to take the AP?
Yep. Well, I think the point, though, is that it's on their own. I mean, you can get, they can take you so far, you can still take the test, but then everybody is clear that we didn't get you all the way, and you're going to have to do X, Y, and Z through your initiative in order to, you know, take the test. And so it's a way to do actually what they were having to do before, but being real about how far you're going to be able to get through in a semester class that really is, it's meant to be a year-long class.
Ms. Boy?
Are we talking AP Human Geography or AP Geography?
Yes.
Okay.
AP Human Geography. I'll make that change on the slide.
Yeah, it's a great...
Yep.
Because that's...
So, yep, the current, the current course is AP Human Geography, yes.
Because my son took that last year.
Yep.
So that was the only AP class offered to ninth graders. So is that, are there going to be any other AP classes offered to ninth graders, or are we just considering 10th grade is really the time where you should be starting to do that?
There are no AP courses offered in ninth grade that we're proposing.
We do have some access to career tech ed offerings that students can access in terms of career pathway courses that are concurrent enrollment courses with Century College that some students can access in ninth grade. But it's not the norm to offer AP in ninth grade, especially if you're only offering it in a semester. The department, I think, has really wrestled with this, trying to think of this from the student experience and the number of students that the majority taking an AP class that's not designed to be offered in that length of time. And I really commend them for the solution they're bringing forward of still having it be college prep and calling it honors until we're able to design a schedule that allows for them to access a year-long AP Human Geography course without taking away other elective offerings in our current way that the schedule's offered.
So the way this was offered, then, did they shrink down the number of days that you were going over certain topics, or how did they make it fit within?
It was, yeah, I mean, there really wasn't any depth. It was just trying to get through all the material that they could within that 82 days first semester and 62 days second semester.
My son actually really liked that class, but it was unmoderated.
Yes, yes.
Ms. Carol?
Two things, I guess. First, it's a statement, but I don't know, maybe this has changed because it's been quite a bit of a time since I took that class many years ago. But I noticed that, like, for my classmates, a lot of the times that kids took AP Geography in ninth grade, it was a good, like, step into taking a full-year history AP credit in 10th grade. Kids often, if they didn't take AP in ninth grade, they were too scared to take it in 10th grade because they knew that AP US History was harder than AP Geography. So if you weren't ready to do AP Geography, how are you going to be ready to do AP US History? So I just wonder if kids are going to be discouraged from then taking AP History in 10th grade because they felt they weren't getting that, like, little potent into the AP world in their beginning years of high school. And also, AP Geography, like, in the meantime, before we get that figured out about scheduling, is it going to be offered anywhere else, maybe at South Campus for kids that want to take AP with a teacher instead of having to learn extra stuff on their own? Because I know that the college curriculum is really difficult, and so trying to learn that on your own is a struggle. Even with, have a teacher, it can be difficult. So are we offering that at South Campus maybe for some years to take when they're not, after they finish world history? Is that a possibility, or is it kind of just going to have to wait until we can figure out the scheduling?
Yeah, we, I mean, we didn't, that wasn't brought up as an option, but I think that's, I mean, that's a great suggestion.
Is that all you have? Dr. Neimester?
And I just want to honor the people that have taught human geography over the years because they knew their kids had to work really hard. And they offered extra classes because the kids that had it first semester continued on, and they checked out that review book when they turned in their textbook. And the teachers met with them weekly. So I think it was a lot of effort, but it was a good relationship. And they did the best they could with a half sandwich.
Yeah. The other option that the department wanted, considered, was not offering it at all as honors or, like, as AP or not offer the class at all because of the semester challenge. And I think that coming to this honors where it's college prep, it's still showing readiness for a course. I really, I really commend the department for coming up with a way that honors what's actually, could be taught in a way that really is preparing students in the amount of time that they're given to teach it.
Ms. Boy?
So we're replacing it with honors geography. So human geography was almost more of a social studies class than...
Yep.
So is honors geography going to be the same type of thing, or is it actually going to be a geography class?
It'll be the same human geography, honors human geography.
Yep.
We might want to rethink the name. Human geography is really kind of, it's a confusing title for what they're studying, because it's, like I said, it's more social studies about different areas, different communities and different people in different areas.
Yeah, and geography is one of the social studies disciplines, and that's just one element of geography, is the human aspect of it. So geography has the human aspect, it has the physical landscape, it has political landscape. And so it's just like one element of geography, just like we have US History, World History, Minnesota History. So you're totally right that it is one of the social studies.
Because this one goes over two of those things that you've just said, but it doesn't really go over topography or any of that kind of stuff.
That's another element of...
It's physical.
You didn't mean to call it geography, did you?
Human, it should have been honors human geography, yes. And I think with the course description, that'll accompany the, in the course guide, the title, I think hopefully that'll help specify.
Mr. Rollson?
Would you be willing to entertain a question, it's like three slides back, I saw that Introduction to Business class in conjunction with Century College?
Sure.
And Wayne and Kim, I welcome your perspectives on it, but I am not suggesting that what I'm about to mention be included in this class, more of a follow-on to it. Okay, ninth through 12, so they have more than one shot. But would you consider including actuarial science and introduction to, in this course?
Is that kind of...
The risk analysis behind insurance, things of that sort.
You trying to board them to depth?
Yeah, we can...
Well, you know, actuarial science is something with either a ribboned bite or you're bored to tears.
Well, Ms. Boy, since you were in this class last year, there's probably a project-based DECA opportunity that could...
I thought was on the higher, I thought was on the higher end, you know, 11th, 12th, and in conjunction with Century College, you might be able and prepared to delve into those aspects, which would considerably broaden the business exposure that is being proffered here.
You can definitely take that back to the business department.
Ms. Carol?
Just, did you say that they could get college credit?
We're working on that, yes.
That's pretty cool, considering a lot of kids do go into business that already have college credit in business center area, boost them on their...
All right. Other questions? Okay, thank you.
So the next piece is course realignment. I have a couple of these. The first two are from the Language Arts Department. And so in our current graduation requirement model for English, English Language Arts, students are able to choose a literature, a composition, or a combination of two courses their senior year. The Language Arts... The Language Arts Department is proposing a course realignment where the graduation requirement for Language Arts would stay the same, but students would be required to take one literature and one composition course their senior year. We believe this new model would allow students to better master the literature standards that are required, and this would also align with our neighboring school districts. The second one is a realignment proposal for Language Arts to separate Language Arts 12 and Reading 950. So currently, Reading 950 is a developmental course offered in partnership with Century College to seniors in the Language Arts 12 course. Students who pass the course are able to take a credit-bearing course at the high school or at the college level. Right now, all students who take Language Arts 12 have to follow the developmental curriculum for Reading 950. We believe by separating these two courses, it will allow students to be able to self-select in the Language Arts course that most meets their needs. Social Studies is the next one. And currently, American Experiment is combined Honors-level course for both History and Language Arts. Students earn one graduation requirement for both Social Studies and Language Arts. The Social Studies Department is proposing to separate the two courses, so students are able to take Honors American History, American Experiment, and/or Honors Language Arts 10, American Experiment, or both. This will create more opportunities for students who may want to take an Honors course but not have to take two at the same time. It also provides more flexibility in a student's schedule.
I like that one.
Fiscal Education, there's two course offering proposals. The PE department is proposing, the first, to ensure that the Unified PE course meets the Minnesota State standards, so students can fulfill their fourth credit, their one-fourth credit in PE by taking that course. This change would allow more peers without disabilities to take the Unified PE course as their required PE course in ninth grade and not as an elective.
Ms. Ellison?
Could you just explain briefly Unified PE to me?
Physical Education.
But I mean, like, what's Unified PE as opposed to regular?
Yep, yep, yep. So the Unified PE is a newer course that we've offered, I believe, last year. And what it does, it provides an opportunity for students who have IEPs to really be in the mainstream physical education course with peers who don't have disabilities. And so it allows for, you know, an experience beyond maybe what a DAP PE course could offer. And the challenge that we're finding is students who don't have IEPs, this is an elective course for them, and so it's difficult to be able to have, you know, the sweet spot is to have about five students that take it as an elective to be in the Unified PE course, and we're having difficulty when kids have to take it as an elective and take that ninth-grade PE course as well. So we're hoping that this will alleviate that burden to take two courses and to just take that Unified PE course as their choice for ninth grade. And the PE department is really looking at doing an application process for students who'd like to be in the Unified PE course to really match students, so everyone has a good experience in that course.
Ms. Chapman?
Just want to say how much I appreciate this as an option for students to be able to meet that requirement, that PE requirement.
Other questions, comments? Okay.
Okay, and then the second proposal is to offer Bears Weights during a zero-hour course at South Campus. This will allow more flexibility in the school day for students to take another elective during the day. We have students who are already lifting weights before school, so this will provide an opportunity for students to obtain the credit before the school day. There was a student survey given to students who are in the elective classes, and over 72% of the students said that they would be interested in taking a Bears Weights course as zero hour.
All right.
And finally, course offering for our current courses, Manufacturing and Applied Engineering 1 and 2. The proposal would be to align our two courses with a four-course concurrent enrollment through Century College. So the idea would be that we would take two quarter classes at Century each semester and offer those at the high school. It is aligned with the National Manufacturing Skills Standards Council Certified Production Technician, or CPT, and this is an industry-recognized credential, so we'd be working with Century College to offer our current course, those two current courses, to be able to obtain that concurrent enrollment, and then also the industry-recognized credential.
They would take this at the high school, they would have?
So this is, right now, we have Manufacturing and Applied Engineering 1 and 2 already. And what we're really seeing is students, when we're looking at our CTE courses, they want to be able to have that concurrent enrollment option of taking those electives. And so this would allow students to take those courses and then get college credit for passing those courses. And then also, it offers an industry-recognized credential, so after they pass that course, they have opportunity to take the test to be able to get that credential that they can use then in the workforce.
Okay. Thank you. Questions, comments? All right, thank you very much for your work.
Thank you, everyone, for your time.
All right, we will move into our next discussion item, Discussion of Pos 2020, 2021, and 2021, 2022 School Year Calendar. Is it already that time for 2020?
Yeah, we wish, we wish we would be talking about it even sooner. I know that a lot of people like to hear kind of the dates that are going to be set aside for start to end of the school year, the breaks. So we're excited to be bringing this forward tonight. I know that you had a chance to look at this ahead of time, and then we would want to have you approve this at the next school board meeting. Probably the thing that I appreciate most from the work that we did with the calendar committee is that they did just some really strategic look at where there could be some pairing of holidays and professional development days in order to create a little bit more of a seamless experience for our families. So I think we're pretty happy about what the calendar looks like next year, and then providing those key dates that we are confident that are not going to change with a construction schedule, getting those dates out for 21, 22 as well.
I had a quick question. I know that this year, we did a thing where we didn't have school on Election Day. Is that proposed for 2020 also?
It is, and here's why. We really looked at that as a safety issue for students, and we got a lot of feedback, and Mr. Maurer can speak to this as well. The election officials really felt that that was a really good system in terms of how people coming into the schools and voting, and I think we also saw some unanticipated benefits of some civic engagement from our students that day alongside parents, and having the professional development day that we need to have anyways put on that day. It seemed like there were a lot of wins to that plan, and so we wanted to continue with that for another year to see how that goes.
Do we take into consideration, I know that this next year, we'll have a primary day, I think it's in March, that we.
So the primary is after, it's after school hours?
Well, it's a voting day. It's voting day, it's during the day, but the issue ran into last year's when they issued out the dates for the primary election, our calendar was already set.
Okay.
So that will not happen in March.
So we'll just make sure that we have the resources in place to manage that, make sure it's secure.
The counties are aware, they do their best with the election judges they have to make sure that they have enough people on staff to make sure that we can, make sure we have to save the space, save as space as possible.
Perfect. Other questions, comments regarding the calendar? Ms. Ellison?
I just want to say, I really appreciated the day off for Election Day, and I appreciate that in the next year's calendar, there's a teacher PD day the day before. I think that makes a lot of sense. I mean, I liked having a random Tuesday off in the middle of the week, but I think it makes sense to have kind of two days back-to-back. So I really appreciated that. And then the other thing I wanted to comment, if I can, on 21, 22. The dates for MEA are already set, so we could probably add those in, because those are set for the next, like, 10 years in October. And then June is the wrong June, because May 31st ends on a Tuesday, and then June 1st is also on a Tuesday.
I think we might want to fix that.
So, thank you very much.
They're graduating on a Saturday.
Okay. All right, thank you very much. Appreciate that.
Other questions, comments? Okay, thank you very much.
All right.
With that, we will take a short recess, and we'll reconvene upstairs in Room 201 to do this through School Board Professional Development. So I would ask you all to reconvene up there within, what, 10 minutes? Give you time to get some water or whatever you need, and we will move. Thank you all very much.